I'm going to order the June 1st meeting in the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, and with the presence of all three members, and I'm going to ask Mr. Hartman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, one united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a couple of opening comments this morning. As I said, today is June 1st, and this afternoon at 2:00 PM, the county will hold its fifth annual Pride Month flag raising event outside the courthouse at the corner of Aryan and Swede Streets, right here in downtown Narsetown. We will be celebrating Pride Month and the impact that lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex individuals, advocates, and allies have made on history in the United States and here in Montgomery County. We invite you to come to hear from community leaders and activists who have been fighting against hatred, violence, and discrimination, and for their basic human rights, which are increasingly under attack. I'm proud that despite the fact that there is more work to be done, we live in a state with the largest number of LGBTQ+ inclusive local non-discrimination ordinance adopted of any state in the nation. Additionally, Montgomery County has proactively advocated for all of our employees and residents. We have expanded our equal opportunity statement to include sexual orientation and gender identity or expression. We also cover domestic partners in our county employee health insurance plan, and have created a health support page on the county's website that addresses the specific needs of the LGBTQ+ community. Our paid parental leave policy covers all employees regardless of gender identity, and we were the first county in the Commonwealth to allow same-sex marriage. We will continue to work to make sure that everyone who lives or visits Montgomery County feels welcome, and hope you will join us to celebrate later today. And again, that's 2:00 PM outside the county courthouse. This Saturday, June 3rd, is National Trails Day. National Trails Day recognizes all the incredible benefits that our local trails provide for recreation, transportation, and exposure to nature. It encourages people to discover their local trails, become active in supporting trail issues, and share their excitement for the outdoors. Montgomery County's extensive 94.6-mile trail system, I'm just going to start saying 100, is a great source of pride, education, and enjoyment for all of our residents and visitors. We are dedicated to providing more opportunities for outdoor activities for our residents and expanding our trail network. The trails connect communities not only within Montgomery County, but also with surrounding counties and in states. They create more open space and give residents more options than traveling by vehicle, helping to make our world more sustainable for future generations. And based on a return on environment study report by our planning commission, it shows how protected open space, including public parks and trails, provides tremendous health and recreational value in addition to economic value. We are continuing to upgrade and expand our trail system here in Montgomery County. On March 13th, we cut the ribbon on the Chester Valley Trail Extension, which connects the Schuylkill River Trail to the Chester Valley Trail, right here in Narsetown. And these are the two most widely used trails in southeastern PA. And on March 24th, in Upper Dublin, there was a groundbreaking for the Fort Washington Cross County Trail and Road Diet Middle Section Project. Lastly, we kicked off our annual Trail Challenge on May 7th, and the Trail Challenge is a really great way to explore our trails, and you have an opportunity to win prizes. So for more information about the Trail Challenge, please visit www.montgomerycountypa.gov/trailchallenge. And finally, on Thursday, June 15th, at 1:00 PM, the county will hold its second annual Juneteenth Flag Raising Event at the courthouse in Narsetown. For those unfamiliar with its history, Juneteenth, commonly referred to as "Juneteenth," is the oldest known celebration honoring the end of slavery in the United States. On June 19th, 1865, Union Army General Gordon Granger read federal orders in Galveston, Texas, that all previously enslaved people in Texas were free. Texas was the most remote of the Confederate states, and the last place the Emancipation Proclamation was enforced, though it had been issued two years prior. The flag raising event will feature a reading of the Emancipation Proclamation and a recognition of the winners of the 2023 Art Improves of Freedom Contest. So please mark your calendars and join us on June 15th.
Great, thank you. Good morning. First, for my comments, I'd like to acknowledge that June is National Immigrant Heritage Month. More than 13% of people in the U.S. are foreign-born. During this time, we honor the contributions of immigrants to our country and county and their profound impact. Our nation and county have been built and strengthened by people from around the world who left their homelands, lives, and in some cases, loved ones, to seek refuge and opportunity here. Almost 30% of the county's population growth has been driven by immigrants over the past two years. Immigrants fuel our economy and work in every industry and profession. They create new businesses and generate millions of jobs. They bring new traditions, customs, and perspectives that keep American innovation fresh and dynamic. They are passionately engaged in our government, schools, and communities. Each generation of immigrants has made our community stronger and reaffirm that diversity is, and always has been, our greatest strength. I encourage everyone to learn more about the history of our country's diverse immigrant communities and take part in activities that remind us of our values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Next, I would like to recognize that May was Jewish American Heritage Month. Montgomery County is home to almost 85,000 adults and children of Jewish faith. According to a study in 2020 by the Jewish Federation of Greater Philadelphia, "The story of the Jewish people is one of resilience, faith, and hope in the face of adversity, prejudice, and persecution." They have been strong partners and advocates in our ongoing march for justice, equality, and freedom for all. They have done this despite having history marked by genocide and persecution and the record rise of hate and antisemitism we are seeing today. In fact, just last week, the Biden administration unveiled a new national strategy to counter antisemitism. The plan calls for improving safety and security for Jewish, as well as Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities. It also calls on tech companies to establish a zero-tolerance policy for hate speech. The Jewish people have been great leaders, generous philanthropists, and compassionate community volunteers dedicated to helping those in need. As an example, we are fortunate to have had, as our former county leader and member of the Jewish community, Governor Josh Shapiro, who holds all of these attributes and continues to advocate on behalf of all of our residents. I hope that you will take the time to learn more about their values, culture, and contributions, and how they have shaped our nation and our communities. That concludes my remarks. Thanks.
Ms. Gallow?
All right. We will now move on to public comments on matters appearing on the agenda.
Ms. Harris.
I have an objection.
Please sit. Make sure of your objection.
The general comment period and the agenda comment period are not the same thing, and you keep wanting to make it the same thing.
Very good, Ms. Brotchio. Your comments have been noted. Please sit down.
Noting it doesn't mean anything if you don't change your words.
Ms. Brotchio, your comments have been noted.
You have to stop interrupting people when they are speaking.
Now, does security have you removed?
No, security's not going to remove me, because I'm not doing anything to threaten security.
Are you open to hearing?
Yes. Ms. Harris.
Ms. Gallow, you have?
First for public comment, we have Pauline Brotchio.
Pauline Brotchio, Towneington Township. You know, Ken, if you would spend as much money and time on the homeless instead of the trails, maybe you could make some headway there. That's what you said you wanted to do before you leave at the end of the year, which I still think you should resign prior to that, because you are a felony rapist. The other thing is about this Pride Month and Immigrant Month, and you're putting up all these flags. I want an Italian flag up there, because my parents came from Italy. They were immigrants, legal immigrants. So when you put the immigrant flag up there, you should put "legal immigrant," okay? Not illegals, because illegals are not doing anything to benefit this country. They're sucking us dry, okay? And, you know, Juneteenth, wonderful, celebrate that, but then bring back Columbus Day as well, because Christopher Columbus, and I know none of you really know this, Christopher Columbus was actually one of the first civil rights promoters. He was not what they're saying. That was fabricated in the '60s, and I can bring, I don't have time right now, obviously, because I only have less than a minute left, but Christopher Columbus actually was a pioneer in civil rights. And Judge Paula Patrick, if you know of her, she's a judge in Philadelphia, who is a wonderful judge. She judges, she rules by law, not threats and bribes. And she's the one who actually told me that, you know? So I didn't even realize that, but we have to bring back Columbus Day, and we can stop with the Indigenous Day, because I don't know, I don't really understand what they did that was so wonderful. Columbus is the one who came here and actually started this country, this continent. And the continents, both south and north, are named after an Italian, Amerigo Vespucci. So if you don't like Italians, change the name of the continent, change the name of the country.
Ms. Harris.
Next, we have David Morgan.
I'm David Morgan from Ambler. I'm commenting about Agenda Item K3, which is for $1,166,237 for Wi-Fi in the Justice Center, another Justice Center cost. I'm always watching that we're having our taxpayer funds well-spent. I note that there is also cost that we'd like to have, as taxpayers, really knowing how much is spent on this project, a tally, a town hall, something that would give us clear updates on how our money is going. It seems that this is, the walls aren't even up yet, and so it's too much too soon, it seems. Remember, in August 2021, $232 million was spent. We consider also, with our taxpayer money, well, used for the homeless besides a Justice Center. We have 18 West Ari Street, and the secure area, as I understand, is this side of the street. This area here doesn't have to have just office buildings, it could be a place for the homeless to stay, and this is a golden opportunity to help the homeless people. It's a fairly large building, so maybe a change order in renovations to this building to make there be some of our county staff right nearby for security, too, on this side of the street. So we have this difficulty of historic spending for a building that's historically large over there, but we don't know how much is being spent. So accounting that way would really be helpful. I tried to do this by open order request, didn't work, because I couldn't find a document. So please disclose the cost and consider the homeless.
Next, we have Giuseppe Monticelli.
The Bright Island Board Chairman from Contra Hockenborough in Springfield Township, Giuseppe Crini-Monticelli. I have agenda items here to talk about. First one would be I3. It's going to be a bid on behalf of Public Safety for a custom firefighting foam tender vehicle. I would highly urge that commissioners vote in favorable for that agenda item. We've got to have J2. It's going to be a contract award for Health and Human Services senior community. It's going to be multiple providers. We're spending $5 million in one go here, nearly $6 million, actually. That's a lot. I would just question what these funds are being used for, and I've been told that we're going to soon find out when that is read off. J5. It's going to be drug and alcohol prevention and youth mental awareness program evaluation services. Why the hell are we getting a company from California? Is there any way we can get some really good, qualified, trained people from Montgomery County Emergency Service, or from Brookland, or from, how about Demrocks, or how about Foundation's Behavioral Health in Doralstown, or Horsham Clinic? You know, all these places have really good, already qualified individuals and mental health technicians. K3. We're looking at Wi-Fi of being $1 million? Why is it you can't use Cisco Wi-Fi extender? So you're having to put in ethernet cables? Really? You know?
We have three people for general public comment, and first is Pauline Brotchio.
Pauline Brotchio, Towneington Township. Again, about the transgendering that's going on in this county, and this applies to all children, including yours, and yours, and his, and hers. What's going on in our school districts is really disgusting and pathetic.
Ms. Brotchio, you've been told on multiple occasions that school boards must be brought in front of school board.
And I've done that, and they say, "Come here," and I'm here. You know what? You stop to stop interrupting me, or you give me my time back. You either stop your mouth or stop the clock. You do not follow the rules of the Sunshine Law. Deputy, please remove him. He's breaking the law. He's literally breaking the law. Okay? So if the deputy can't arrest him for breaking the law, then don't even come near me, okay? As I said, the Mental Health Department and the Health Department, both, because transgendering also involves the health of the person, the physical health, besides the mental health. It's destroying their bodies, okay? When they have these surgeries, they're literally mutilating their bodies, and they cannot come back from that. It is irreversible. And when they start with children as young as five, eight, and they start doing the top surgeries, and they start doing the puberty blockers, everybody knows who Michael Jackson is. The reason his voice never changed was because his father insisted he keep getting injections. That man never was able to come to full adulthood, because he was not allowed to go through puberty, okay? And your faces that you're making makes you look like a bigger fool than you actually are. So stop it, Ken. These are real issues, and if you can't be real, as I said before, leave. You're a rapist, and you're not moral, you have nothing else going for you, except your mommy, okay? Your mommy went to Merck, you went to Merck, your mommy worked for the county, you come and work for the county. All right? So stand on your own two feet. You have somebody who's not elected running this meeting all the time. Oh, and you're going to point to him? Oh, time's up. Well, I object. This is another objection.
Time's up.
I'm making an objection.
Your time is up.
I'm making an objection.
The time was for an objection. Have a seat.
No, I am objecting, because the two-minute rule is not in compliance with the Sunshine Law. Well, then, change it, because you are in violation.
Sit, please.
You got to get this guy out of here.
Ms. Harris.
Next for general public comment is David Morgan.
I think it was commendable at last meeting, the presentation about the drug help for those who are facing trials. I also think it was helpful in Mental Health Month, Awareness Month, and seeking positive steps. How can we help earlier prevention of drug problems? I'm glad the county promotes healthy activity. Walking trails is good, as long as not too much is spent on them. Family time, as mentioned, facing each other rather than being online too much, listening to each other, committed relationships like marriage, financial education, so that people don't find themselves entrapped in credit card debt. In the schools, it'd be great to have more of that. Promoting Monco Mamas with love for mother and baby, rather than abortion drug-induced abortion, which has the mental health risk of women who might see their child dead, not alive anymore. So how much better is it to consider the Monco Mama's program and adoption, and both our county activities? So they can be promoted more, and these positive life-giving activities, I think it's just wonderful, so that the family is supporting each other, and also to consider the dangers, because we have a fentanyl problem. Fentanyl infiltrates from problems with the border, also coming through America in great quantities. If someone takes a drug, is it laced with fentanyl, and that's the end. So anything we can do to have a firm foundation to prevent drug problems in the future, I encourage you in that role, and to have, maybe on buses, any kind of way of putting out information, so that healthy lifestyles are encouraged in Monco.
Next for general public comment, we have Giuseppe Monticelli.
Giuseppe Monticelli, Contra Hocken, Springfield. For my general public comment, I want to mention another sign problem. This one's going to be at the Skip Pack entrance on 73 there, and it's right before Buffalo and Pike, and it's going to be at the Militia Hill thing, and you have your own county sign there. Well, of course, the names are wrong, but in this instance, we also have another problem of where it's totally dented in, like a car just totally ran into it. I would love to see some of that $28 billion clawback money from the COVID relief funds that the county has to give back to the federal government. I would love to see, maybe before you even have to do that, if you possibly can, before they clawback the money, to use that money. But you can't, well, then I think you should use some of the general fund, and you need to go ahead and get that done. I want to talk about how you cannot be on any medication. We're not talking about opioids. We're talking about muscle relaxants, gabapentin, even Imetrix, if you're wanting to participate in the Behavioral Health Court program. You're diabetic? Oh, you're screwed. You can't have insulin. That's what I was told by a female employee over there when I inquired, when my source, who was a veteran, was saying that to me. I couldn't, I was shocked. I was shocked that I verified that information to be true. And yes, I'm mindful of my time, Mr. Stein, and hopefully I've been doing well about that. Thank you.
So, Mr. Monticelli, with regards to signs, we could potentially have three new commissioners in January, so it would make no sense to change the signs now and then have to change them again, because that would be a cost.
Okay.
So the signs will be changed when there are new commissioners in January. So I don't, I hope you get out on the trails, but don't expect to see any signs changed until probably February or next year.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
Ms. Harris.
We have three people for public comment, virtual public comment. Jean White, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Jean White from Montgomery Township. My first item is during the 2023 primary election in Montgomery Township, the judge of elections for Precinct 8, located at Montgomery Township Recreation Center, and Precincts 2 and 7, located at Montgomery Elementary School on Stump Road in North Wells, did not post the end-of-night tapes. I know that they are trained to do this, but did not perform this very important task. In Precincts 5 and 6, located at Montgomery Township Building on Stump Road in North Wells, the judge of elections split the one machines tape into Republican and Democrat tapes, and taped them to the glass door. However, the Republican tape was only taped at the top, so the tape curled up, and was taped upside down, so it was unreadable. In addition, the tape was also placed in front of a sign embedded in the glass door to use the other door, so even if they had taped it correctly and uncurled it, it would have been unreadable. Voters and candidates have a right to see these machine results on election night, and we would greatly appreciate if these three judge of elections would be corrected on the proper handling of this very important end-of-election night task. My second item is the e-poll books that versus the paper polling books were tested in Montgomery 1 and 3 polling locations at Bridle Path Elementary in Lansdale, as well as at seven other locations throughout Montgomery County. Since all Montgomery Township precincts, including Montgomery Township Precinct 1 and 3 polls, had very poor voter turnout, namely approximately 300 in Precinct 3, and half that in Precinct 1, in a 13-hour polling window, this is not sufficient voter traffic sampling to consider this a ballot testing environment of the e-polling books in Montgomery County, and should not be rolled out in the general.
Ms. White, my apologies, because your two minutes are up.
All right. Next.
I have an objection.
Noted. Ms. Harris.
I have an objection to the two-minute.
Ms. Harris.
Next, we have Kim Henderson. Kim, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good morning. Kim Henderson, East Norrington. The first statement that I would like to make is the online virtual commenting. We did not get two minutes to speak to the agenda and two minutes to public comments. When you're doing this commenting from the online platform, there's not an option to let the person who's handling the technology to let you know, for us to let them know that we have two, in fact, comments. I would like to take the time to thank the veterans. We just had Memorial Day weekend, Memorial Day in honor of all of those fallen veterans, and I don't, I didn't recall hearing any of the statements from any of the commissioners to take a moment of silence for those veterans who have sacrificed their lives for our very freedoms. I would also like to make a comment on the voting. Election Day, primary on May 16th, I just wanted to make sure that it was on the record that East Norrington 1-4 and East Norrington 2-4 polling machines and ballots were sent to the wrong precincts. So East Norrington 2-4 received East Norrington 1-4 voting machine and ballots, and then East Norrington 1-4 received East Norrington 2-4 machine and ballots. So that all of our voting information is reported incorrectly. Voter Services was aware of it and made a decision one election day to not make the changes, so that they didn't interrupt the polls, because the ballots were the same. I also wanted to state that during the primary, East Norrington voting locations at Cole Manor Elementary School, the elementary school was open until lunch and noon, and I would like that corrected.
Next, we have Marlene Laska. Marlene, you can unmute.
Yes, this is Marlene Laska from Oaks Precinct in Upper Providence. I saw a chart the other day, and it had two pictures, one of the Pride, and one of coffins with the, like, draped with the flag. And it said that you get a whole month for the Pride, and they get only a day. So I just wanted to convey the same as Ken said, that, you know, nothing about those who have died in defense of our country. And to highlight that competing political interests, that what happens when you push for Pride is that you draw between inclusivity and fairness, just like with the sports, and not, and having biological men, males, compete against women. So you end up with competing political interests. And to close, I just want to say that I agree with Pauline's statement, that we need to honor all immigrants, not just, like, I'm from, I have a Polish background. Yeah, Pauline has an Italian background. The bottom line, we need to put Pride in its right place and put it into perspective. Thank you.
All right.
I am going to make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 18th, 2023 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Minutes are approved. First resolution is an authorization to accept the Delaware Valley Regional Plan Grant, and Mr. Hartman is here to present that.
Yes, good morning. I have a short presentation with some slides, too. Great, Ms. Teresa. Good morning again. Today, we will be seeking your acceptance of the conditions of a DVRPC grant award through the execution of the related grant agreement. As you know, DVRPC's regional trails program provides planning assistance and financial support to trail developers, counties, municipalities, and nonprofit organizations to complete the Greater Philadelphia's 800-plus-mile network of multi-use trails, more commonly known as the Circuit. In March 2023, DVRPC awarded the county a $90,000 Regional Trail Program Grant to design trailhead improvements at the Hawes Avenue and Chain Street entrances to the Skook Hill River Trail in Norristown. These trailhead improvements were identified as recommendations in Montgomery County's 2020 Trail Access Diversity and Awareness Plan, which was completed to better understand and determine solutions to challenges hindering the equitable use of the county's trails. Trailhead improvements at these two locations will create a safer and more attractive environment for nearby residents by creating barrier-free access to the Skooka River Trail for users of all abilities, and inviting and welcoming entry onto the trail, and an increased sense of community safety and well-being for residents in the southwestern neighborhoods of Norristown. Specifically, the grant funds will be used to engage a design consultant with the scope of work that will include stakeholder interviews, community engagement, site surveys, schematic design, design development, and construction documents, cost estimation, permitting and approvals, and bid review. Final deliverables will result in 100% construction documents, and the RFP seeking proposals from design consultants will be released in June. In fact, it's on the agenda today. Teresa, if you could flip to the next slide for me, I just want to orient everybody as to where we are. So that red circle, this is a little hard to see, but that is Norristown, where the red circle is, and to the right top and to the left of it as well. That's Barbados Island that sits in the Skooka River Trail, just at the southern part of the circle, but that's where both projects are generally located within the context of Norristown. Next slide, please. Zooming in, that red circle there shows where these two projects are located. You can see on the right-hand side of the slide is Markley Street, which most people are familiar with, as it goes over the Skooka River. Again, that's Barbados Island at the bottom, and the yellow-orange dash line that runs horizontally across the aerial photo is the Skooka River Trail. But Hawes Avenue and Chain Street are both located within that red circle. Next slide, please. And then zooming in even further, the circle on the left is where Hawes Avenue comes down and ultimately goes underneath the Skooka River Trail, but there is a trailhead location at that intersection with Hawes and the Skooka River Trail. And then to the east or to the right is where the Chain Street trailhead would be located. Again, it's immediately adjacent to the Skooka River Trail, which is the orange dash line. Next slide, please. These are a couple of photos. The one on the left is the, are the existing conditions at Hawes Avenue. The street that you see coming down and then going underneath the trail, and the trails at the bottom of the aerial photo, is Hawes Avenue. You can see just to the left or to the west of that is, it's a path that takes you from Hawes Avenue up to the Skooka River Trail, but it's not inviting, it's not necessarily safe, it's hard to see, so the improvements will be made to that trailhead entrance. And the slide on the right comes from the Trail Diversity Plan, and you can see some of the improvements that were envisioned in that plan. They're not necessarily going to be what is ultimately designed, but it looks at things like public art, landscaping, signage, crosswalks at Hawes Avenue, to make it safer and easier and more noticeable to get on the Skooka River Trail. Next slide, please. And then at Chain Street, again, the existing conditions on the left-hand slide, the aerial, the Skooka River Trails at the bottom of the slide, you can see that the area that abuts the trail in that neighborhood of Chain Street, not very inviting, it's a little chaotic, the traffic, or, I'm sorry, the parking is not formalized, and you can see on the right-hand drawing, that's the sketch that came out of the Trail Diversity Study that shows some of the things that were envisioned that could happen there to make it more inviting for residents to use the trail, including more organized parking, landscaping, perhaps a seating area, which is that round area on the left-hand side of the slide, where people can come, get off the trail, have a snack, drink some water, but it's, more importantly, it's really to bring people out of Norristown and onto the trail and make this a more attractive and safer place for them to do that. Montgomery County understands the contracting process and other conditions required to accept and incur costs related to the DVRPC grant funds. The county agrees to perform those services and comply with the requirements specified in the draft agreement between DVRPC and the county, the related scope of work, and budget proposal, as well as the standard Articles of Agreement for William Penn Foundation Regional Trails. Yvonne Montgomery of the county solicitor's office has reviewed the draft agreement and had no comments or suggestions. Therefore, today, we're requesting Board of Commissioner acceptance of the conditions of the grant award through the execution of the grant agreement provided by DVRPC.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hartman. I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission for receipt of a grant in the amount of $90,000 to design the trailhead improvements at the Hawes Avenue and Chain Street entrances to the Skooka River Trail in Narstown. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Mr. Hartman, how long do we think it'll take for design on this?
I imagine about a year.
A year.
And then our intent is to move as quickly as possible into making improvements.
Okay, cool. Any comments or questions? All right, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Silver.
Good morning. Thanks, Teresa. Today, we are here seeking your approval and resolution to post the 2023 Annual Action Plan for a required 30-day public comment period. Next slide, please. In accordance with federal regulations, as well as required under certain U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requirements, we have put together a draft 2023 Annual Action Plan, which outlines our funding for community planning, development of affordable homes, municipal projects, nonprofit social services, and public facility improvements. This is required under three federal entitlement grants that we receive through HUD that you see listed here, the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnerships Program, and Emergency Solutions Grant Program. We also incorporate into this plan funding for housing reinvestment partnerships funding and the homeless assistance program. Those are both state-level funding, as well as funding out of our local Affordable Housing Trust Fund to support these activities. Next slide, please. We put together a open funding application cycle, which took place in February and March, as well as we had an open citizen participation meeting on February 20th to help us guide the funding and application cycle. We received over $14.5 million in requests for funding for the eligible activities, and we have, you'll see, sort of in the, on the top grid, bottom right, 8.2 million to deliver out of these funding grant sources. We've seen slight changes in our three entitlement grants, CDBG, Emergency Solution, and Home, but overall, they've remained fairly level, and we will move on to the next slide, please. So for the funding allocations, this is a summary of that 8.2 million dollars. You will see the majority going into development for affordable homes. We do have our loan repayment that is required by HUD, planning administration, but large investments as well in municipal improvement projects, emergency shelter, rapid rehousing, and other tenant-based rental assistance program, public services and case management, and public facility improvements. In, next slide, please. In the plan for our biggest portion of the pie, we have six affordable housing development for proposed funding that you see listed on the screen here. Alliance Housing Development Lauder Schleger School recommending funding for senior affordable housing from home funds, recommending funding for Anne Francis Outreach Foundation for the preservation and acquisition of existing affordable housing. Elon, which is Montgomery Park Senior Housing, increased funding for them to support their senior housing development. Federation Housing and Blue Bell, another senior affordable housing development. Walters Group Development, investment in this multifamily development, and Genesis Housing Corporation for homeownership projects in Pottstown. Next slide, please. We have seven proposed municipal improvement projects listed here, ranging in Bridgeport Borough, Borough Wide Street Improvements, Cheltenham Township, a community center improvement contingent upon the completion of a community planning study supporting this project, Pensberg Borough for Lakeview Terrace and Seminary Street Improvements, Royersford Borough for Pine Street Improvements, Shwanksville Borough for Street Improvements, West Conshawaken Borough for Sidewalk Improvements, and West Posgrove Township for Cemetery Sewer Replacement. These are all community development block grant projects. Next slide, please. Another, sort of going down the pie chart, another big chunk of the pie are proposed funding for emergency shelter projects. These we are funding out of not only Community Development Block Grant, which allows up to 15% in that funding for public services, but as well as our state funding out of the Homeless Assistance Program, which comes out of the state's Human Services Block Grant, and we are also supporting some projects out of Your Way Home philanthropy funds, as held through our partners at the Montgomery County Foundation. So you see nine total projects here, ranging from emergency shelters throughout the county, some of which provide Code Blue and seasonal emergency shelter during the winter season only. Next slide, please. We have three proposed rapid rehousing and tenant-based rental assistance projects, a required 40% set aside of the Emergency Solutions Grant to support our rapid rehousing programs through Your Way Home, as well as investment from the Home Program for a already existing program out of Family Services that provides tenant-based rental assistance to households living with HIV or AIDS who are at risk of experiencing homelessness, and then a required match for our Continuum of Care Program, which supports even more rapid rehousing to help house people experiencing homelessness. Next slide, please. Our Public Facility Improvement Project proposed funding are two projects, one in Ambler for the Senior Adult Activity Services of Montgomery County and Indian Creek Foundation. These are public facility buildings that provide services to the community and people with disabilities, as well as seniors, who need improvements to these buildings, and this would be supported through our Community Development Block Grant funding. Next slide, please. And finally, Public Services and Other Nonprofit Case Management Projects, continued support of the North Hills Collective, which provides an after-school program for children in the North Hills area, as well as a SAMSA-approved best practice called the SOAR Program operated out of VNA, which helps connect high-need individuals with expedited connection to Social Security Disability Income. Next slide, please. And finally, we, CDBG allows for planning activities for fair housing compliance and proposing, supporting that through our Housing Equality Center of Pennsylvania. Next slide, please. And just next steps with this resolution today, the draft 2023 Annual Action Plan will be available for public comment beginning tomorrow, June 2nd, 2023, through July 2nd, for citizens, public agencies, and other interested parties to examine its contents and submit comments. Comments can be submitted through mail, telephone, or via email directly to my office. Instructions will be posted at www.moncopa.org. The draft plan will be posted on the website by navigating to my Office of Housing and Community Development, which is within the Department of Health and Human Services. Paper copies and translation are also available. And then we will be holding a public hearing to gain public comments. This will be hybrid. It'll be here in One Montgomery Plaza, as well as available. You can register online to attend virtually on Tuesday, June 20th, at 6:00 p.m. And again, that will be on our calendar on the Montgomery County website. That's all.
Thank you. I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize the 2023 Annual Action Plan, including the attached list of proposed projects for funding under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, Emergency Solutions Grant Program, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and the Housing Reinvestment Partnership, be available for public comment for a period of 30 days, beginning June 2nd, 2023, and ending on July 2nd, 2023, with a public hearing to be conducted through hybrid, in-person, and virtual electronic means, as necessary, on June 20th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. Be it further resolved, the public comment will be accepted by the Board of Commissioners until July 2nd, 2023, with final action on the 2023 Annual Action Plan to be taken on July 20th, 2023. Submission of the Annual Action Plan to HUD will be made by August 11th, 2023, be it further resolved that the Human Services Block Grant activities appearing in the attached list of proposed projects are hereby funded effective July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any more comment or questions? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you, Kelly. All right, we have a few commissioners' appointments to make. I will make a motion to appoint Commissioner Kennedy Lawrence Jr. as the county's representative to the Board of Directors of the Montgomery County Conservation District through December 31st, 2023, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the state conservation district law, Act of May 15th, 1945, Public Law 547, Number 217. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any more comment? We'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I have an objection.
State the nature of your objection.
Yeah, conflict of interest, persons supporting themselves to a board. That's my nature.
I also object. I object, too. How, and how is he doing that?
Noted. For the record, there is no conflict of interest. Thank you, Mr. Stein. We'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I vote no.
Motion passes. We have an appointment and reappointment to the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority. I'll make a motion that George Schools be appointed and that Jonathan Spurgill be reappointed to the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority, for terms to begin immediately and expire on June 1st, 2028, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any more comments?
Yes, I'll be a no vote on this, because in the past, there was members of the public that I believe had stronger credentials to be an asset to the Redevelopment Authority, so I'll be voting no.
Okay. We'll be voting? Yes? Okay, so we'll move on to a vote. Motion passes, two to one, with Commissioner Gale as a no. We'll move on to personnel now. There you are, Marie. Ms. Calder.
You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated Tuesday, May 30th, 2023, with a timestamp of 2:00 p.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the June 1st, 2023 personnel presentation as given by First Assistant Solicitor, Marine Calder, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any more comment or questions? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you. Ms. O'Malley, advertisements and bids and RFPs.
Yes, we have a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for demolition of the former Montgomery County Prison on Erie Street in Norristown. The successful responder will provide complete demolition of the site, including testing, environmental abatement, and returning lot to a grass area with clean, compacted material suitable for future building. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Two, RFP on behalf of assets and infrastructure for redevelopment planting for the former Montgomery County Prison Lot on Erie Street in Norristown. The successful responder will provide planning services for the former Montgomery County Prison Lot, Marison Erie Street in Norristown. The successful respondent will provide potential development options. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Three, bid on behalf of public safety for a custom firefighting foam tender vehicle. The successful responder will provide a customized, environmentally responsible foam firefighting vehicle. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for a lead outreach and education provider. The successful responder will provide bilingual service providers to perform lead hazard outreach, education, and interpretation services for the Office of Public Health and the Office of Housing and Community Development. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Five, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for lead hazard control services. The successful responder will manage the Lead and Healthy Homes Program as a housing subrecipient of the Office of Public Health and the Office of Housing and Community Development. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Six, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for lead abatement training provider. The successful responder will provide bilingual lead abatement training services. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Seven, RFP on behalf of the Planning Commission for Trailhead Improvement Design Services. Seven, RFP on behalf of the Planning Commission for Trailhead Improvement Design Services. The successful responder will provide design consulting services for improvements to the Hawes Avenue and Chain Street trailhead connections to the Schuylkill River Trail in Norristown. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.montco PA.org/purchasing.
I will make a motion to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of RFPs and bids as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any more comment? Hearing done, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Awards of contract.
Number one, contract award, assets and infrastructure, guide rail installation services, road safety systems LLC of Schaumburg, New Jersey, $203,157.50. Contract provides for the installation of guide rail and treatments, bridge connections, and other associated work at six bridges, one culvert, and four roadways located and owned in Montgomery County. Specification 6500 was viewed by 15 providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, contract award, Health and Human Services, seniors community center services, multiple providers, $5,745,696. Contract provides for senior community center services to older residents for access to community services. RFP 2319 was viewed by 52 providers with 12 responses received. Contracts are awarded to the highest-rated responders. Contracts for a period of three years with two optional annual renewal terms. Awarded providers are Pottstown Area Senior Center of Pottstown, PA, Generations of Indian Valley of Soderton, PA, Greater Harleysville and North Penn Senior Services of Harleysville, PA, the Open Link of Pensberg, PA, Senior Adult Activities Center of Montgomery County of Norristown, PA, New Horizons Senior Center of Narwhal, PA, Klein Life of Philadelphia, PA, the Philip J. Son Memorial Foundation Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, Salem Adult Citizens of Roslyn, PA, Aklamo of Norristown, PA, and Center for Positive Aging in Lower Marion of Arkmore, PA. Three, contract award, Health and Human Services, Medical Countermeasures Consultant for the Office of Public Health, Constant Associates of Torrance, California, $150,000. Contract provides for consultants to conduct an assessment of the current medical countermeasures program, including the points of dispensing program, logistics services, and commodities distribution plans. Contract also provides for guidance in the development of an emerging pathogens and high-consequence infectious disease plan. RFP 2320 was viewed by 13 providers with six responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Contracts for a period of one year with no renewal terms. Four, contract award, Health and Human Services, Managed Care Solutions Consultant, the Panto Group LLC of Caddisakwa, PA, $183,750. Contract provides for planning and implementing information systems and solutions in the human services and behavioral health industry with financial management focus. RFP 2335 was viewed by 46 providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated provider. Contract is for a period of one year with four optional annual renewal terms. Five, contract award, Health and Human Services, Drug and Alcohol Prevention and Youth Mental Wellness Program Evaluation Services, West End of San Francisco, California, $390,000. Contract provides evaluation services for provider-led drug and alcohol prevention, student assistance program, and intervention programs. RFP 2262 was viewed by 51 providers with four responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Contract is for a period of three years with two optional annual renewal terms. Six, contract award, Health and Human Services, visitation coaching for families, multiple providers, $170,560. Contract provides for visitation coaching to families whose children are placed in out-of-home care with a permanency goal of reunification. RFP 2301 was viewed by 33 providers with seven responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Contracts for a period of two years with three optional annual renewal terms. Awarded responders, Justice Works Youth Care Incorporated of Pittsburgh, PA, Bethana of Southampton, PA, the Lincoln Center for Family and Youth in Audubon, PA. Seven, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions, Computer Equipment, Lenovo Incorporated of Marsfield, North Carolina, $57,877.60. Contract provides for computer tablets and peripherals for the Office of Children and Youth. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Eight, contract amendment, Information and Technology Solutions Engineering, Pomeroy Technologies LLC of Hebron, Kentucky, no cost. Original contract provides for project engineering resources to assist with the planning and moving of the ITS data centers. Amendment provides for a no-cost time extension of the project through 10/30/2024 due to supply chain issues. Nine, contract amendment, Information and Technology Solutions Engineering, Pomeroy Technologies LLC of Hebron, Kentucky, no cost. Original contract provides for project engineering resources to assist with the planning and moving of the ITS data center. Amendment provides for a no-cost time extension of the project through 10/30/2024 due to supply chain issues. Ten, supplemental reimbursement agreement, assets and infrastructure, roads and bridges, Bridge 83, Butler Pike over Prophecy Creek, Pendot, $2,490,000. Authorization request for agreement between Pendot and Montgomery County provides for funding agreement reimbursing the county for the Bridge number 83, Butler Pike over Prophecy Creek in Upper Dublin Township, increase of $1,800,000 since agreement signed in April 2019. Agreement allows for reimbursement to the county for construction phase costs. Reimbursement agreement provides for 80% reimbursement to the county. Eleven, supplemental reimbursement agreement, Planning Commission, Lafayette Street Project, SEPTA of Philadelphia, PA, $1,045,442. Original reimbursement agreement from June 8th, 2018, requires the county to reimburse SEPTA for costs associated with the installation of an upgraded railroad crossing with quad gates up to a maximum of $1,045,442 based on an estimate during design. Amendment allows for an increase in the amount of authorized reimbursement to SEPTA, which reflects actual installation costs. Twelve, supplemental reimbursement agreement, Planning Commission, Plymouth Township, no cost. Original MOU, Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement, requires Plymouth Township to contribute $2 million of traffic impact fees to be given to Montgomery County on behalf of the Ridge Pike Project from Regal Drive to Chemical Road. Amendment allows for additional time due to Ridge Pike Project Section B being advertised in April and bids opened on April 27, 2023, with an extension of the contract through December 31, 2023. Contract value remains at $2 million. One contract, 20 contract renewals, and one amendment for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and the back of the room.
I will make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any more comment? Hearing done, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Awards of contract, assets and infrastructure, major construction projects.
Number one, contract award, Architectural and Engineering Design Services for the rehabilitation of the Norristown Public Library, Kimmelbrook Red Architecture and Site Incorporated, Blue Bell, PA, $2,182,603. Contract provides for architectural and engineering services for the Norristown Public Library to address the aging infrastructure and prioritize the library's operation as a modern facility to continue to serve the community for the next 50 years. RFP 2312 was viewed by 108 firms with nine responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Two, contract award, Construction Management Services for the rehabilitation of the Norristown Public Library, Scancy USA Building Incorporated, Parsippany, New Jersey, $726,200. Contract provides for construction management services, including preconstruction estimating and consulting services with expertise in construction logistics, scheduling, and costs. RFP 2313 was viewed by 60 firms with four responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Three, contract award, Wi-Fi for the Justice Center E+ Technologies Incorporated of King of Prussia, PA, $1,166,237.56. Contract provides for an IT infrastructure and Wi-Fi components for the Justice Center. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Four, contract award, Stock Picking Lift Equipment, Toyota Lift Northeast LLC of New York, New York, $39,595. Contract provides for two drivable stock picking lifts for use at the new Archives Facility. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract.
All right, I am going to make a motion to approve Number 1, 2, and 4. Preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. I just want to say that I'm very excited to see the library project move forward and looking forward to what becomes of that. Any other comments?
Yes, I also believe the Norristown Library needs significant renovations. However, to factor in engineering design services and construction management services being nearly $3 million before any actual construction takes place, I believe came in too high as a bid, so I'll be voting no on this.
Commissioner Winder, anything? No? All right, so we'll take a vote. Vote in favor, Mr. Winder, in favor. Commissioner Gale, no. Motion passes two to one. I will make a motion for Number 3, to approve the preceding award of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any more comment? All right, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Motion passes two to one. And we will now have awards of contract, Southeast PA Regional Task Force.
One, contract award, Computer and Server Replacement, Dell Technologies Incorporated of Round Rock, Texas, $201,951.66. Contract provides for replacement computer and service equipment for the Montgomery County Emergency Operations Center. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract award, Vehicle Lighting Services, Emergency Vehicle Service Solutions of Aston, PA, $22,715.89. Contract provides emergency vehicle lighting outfit services for Delaware County Emergency Response Vehicles. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Three, contract award, Thermal Imaging Equipment, Whitmer Public Safety Group of CoStars, PA, $27,267.50. Contract provides for two thermal imaging machines for search operations involving trapped or lost victims for use by the Chester County Rescue Test Course. Equipment is available through a federal GSA contract. Four, contract renewal, Mass Notification Software, Everbridge Incorporated, Pasadena, California, $684,329. Contract provides for mass notification software for the Southeast Pennsylvania regional counties. This is the first of four available optional annual renewal terms.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast PA Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any more comment? Hearing done, we'll move on to a vote. Any negative votes? Motion passes. Do we have any closing commissioner comments? I am announcing upcoming meeting dates. We will have an election board meeting on Monday, June 5th, at 12:30 p.m., and our next Board of Commissioners meeting will be June 15th. I will make a motion to adjourn the June 1st, 2023, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any more comment? We'll move on to a vote. Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. Controller Sanchez, welcome. Do we have any public comment on Salary Board? All right, Ms. Calder.
Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a three-page document dated Tuesday, May 30th, 2023, with a timestamp of 2:00 p.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the June 1st, 2023 Salary Board presentation as given by First Assistant Solicitor, Maureen Calder, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any more comment? Hearing done, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn the June 1st, 2023, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board? Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any more comment? Hearing done, we'll move on to a vote.